All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Prior to roll call, allow me to read that the governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued executive order N-33-20, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference call while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health safety precautions. In order to participate in the virtual meeting, this meeting is utilizing a Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the Q and A section of the app is located at the bottom of the Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answer portion of the app, and be sure to state the item that you would be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear concerning that specific item. Please be timely with your questions as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the planning commission and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that particular item. So with that, may I please have roll call?
Chairwoman Blake.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Silman.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Dasher.
Here.
Thank you. We'll now conduct the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Brookman, would you please lead us?
Salute. To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to the public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. So with that, we did have a written comment. However, you are here. Would you like to speak to that item? Or is Ashley going to read it for you?
It's just a public comment, not a written comment.
Oh, a public comment. I'm sorry. So appearance of interested citizens, if you'd like to approach.
Hello. Good evening. Heather Essman, 2020 Lincoln Road. So the last time I was here, we were talking about the Lincoln East and the changes that were being made in the planning or the zoning for that plan that was rescinded. And I noticed in the newspaper today, I don't know if you noticed that, that that section that was rescinded, there are some homes being planned. KB Homes was mentioned, and Interwest, I believe, was mentioned in those two areas. And I did say this at the city council meeting, that the presentation that was given by Mr. Moody seemed to neglect the fact that there were interested people in that area. Because I do believe that you actually, I don't remember if you asked or if it was, if I asked why the need to, you know, kind of get rid of that, or what the situation was. And it just seemed a hindrance is what I remember being told. Not that there were specific investors interested in planning something for that area. Now, my goal in this is I don't care if they develop, but that's fine. And if the city doesn't want to disclose that there are people interested and their plans for that area don't match with the plans that the city spent millions of dollars on developing 10 years ago, that's fine. That's up to the city. If they decide to do that, that's one thing. The one thing that I worry about as the Parks and Rec Commissioner is that in that plan, there was a lot of area, a lot of space, set aside for open spaces, for walking, for parks. Where I live, it's close to Sanborn and Lincoln, so this does impact me. And I don't have a park anywhere. It would take me almost half an hour to walk to the nearest park. So there's no parks anywhere where we live. And the new parks would have been relatively close in that plan, so I would have been able to walk maybe 15 minutes and got to a park instead of half an hour. So my hope is that when things come to the board soon on approvals for some things in this area, that you're reminded of the fact that originally there was a promise in that plan of, I believe it was 82 acres of parks and recreational space that was promised in that plan. And I'm worried that that's going to disappear once these new developers come in because it's going to be piece by piece. And I've had this conversation also with people at the county because this is kind of a, it's a county area, but it's going to be incorporated into the city, questionable, who's responsible type of thing, and reminding everybody that's involved in case it starts to come in as pieces instead of as a project, a large project for the entire area, that we don't lose sight of the fact that there were parks promised in that area, and there were public spaces which include things like schools, that type of thing. So even if they put in another 100 homes or whatever the plan is for that area, the homes are going to be for families. The kids are going to need to go to school. There's got to be some infrastructure. There's got to be some other ideas of what's going to go on there, and there has to be some plans. It needs to be developed a little bit more. And we had a plan, and it was rescinded. So what's the plan now if people start coming to the city or the county? Because they could officially go to the county in certain areas there and just develop individual spots. Does that make sense? So because it's not in a plan anymore, they could go over and start developing on their own little plots and go to the county and ask for permission because they're on the other side. They're not like right on the border, which might screw things up if the idea was to put in a park here or there. It makes it difficult. So I just wanted to make sure that you're focusing in on that once the city starts to come to you with approvals for things and that always in the background, remember, there's got to be a school, there's got to be a park somewhere in this plan. Otherwise, it's going to make things difficult for the city 20 years down the line, okay? Sorry about that.
Thank you, Heather. Well, I can assure you on my behalf, green space is essential to me. I know how important it is to improve our healthy living in our community. So that's of concern to me and importance as well as I have the opportunity to sit here as a planning commissioner today. But you never know what will happen down the line. But with that, I'd like to allow Ben to speak to anything in addition of that public comment.
Absolutely. What I've tried to communicate, you know, both the planning commission and at the city council, is that the zoning remains the same. The Lincoln East specific plan zoning with those parks, with those schools, remains the same. The general plan has been amended. The zoning has been amended to memorialize that. The only way they could change is to go through the city's municipal code planning requirements, where it would come before both the planning commission and the city council to change that. And so should somebody want to move a park? Should somebody want to reduce a park? Should somebody want to change residential to commercial? Which happens all the time. But it would first have to go through the city's processes to be considered, to be analyzed and considered. And at that city council meeting, it was, there was a direct communication from the council that talked about, hey, there was this promise with this land use, with this plan, and that there was expectation for staff to respect that when it comes through and memorializes it when we review a development. And so the Sanborn West development that was highlighted with KB Homes, that was a project that matches the zoning. It was R1. It matches the proposed zoning. And it came before the planning commission, and it still uses all of the city's tools that has, that have been put in place besides the original Lincoln East specific plan that have changed over the last decade to make sure there's impact fees, to make sure that their park neighborhood fee is put in there, make sure there's maintenance districts established so that that plan is done right. And so, yes, it allows for smaller developments to come in, but that's really what the hindrance, one of the hindrances of the many in that plan is because the way ownership works in Uba City is that there's many small pieces. And so we're having a hard time. It's not a Lincoln area or somebody where there's a 100-acre block. And so we see a lot of this near 20-acre developments. And so that's how we need to make sure we're cognizant of that. And that's why the zoning will stay in effect unless it's changed formally.
Thank you. And we do have, just to remind all, the city has protocols for when a park is, in essence, mandated.
Absolutely. And so the general plan has requirements on the amount of parkland. And in that plan, there's parks in there. And so it's definitely, you know, not to say that some property owner, I guarantee you some property owner is going to come before you in the next 10 years and say, I want to change my parkland to residential. And that's going to be a conversation staff's going to have to say, well, you know, this is how it was memorialized. We've been collecting funds. There's a payment process in place now where there's money collected where that could be purchased at a certain point in time, at a certain value. But that will happen. There will be a request. But currently, they have to formally convince the planning commission and the city council to change that. And it's publicly noticed.
I have a comment through the chair. So that's great. And I hear all that, Ben. I'm just curious if this is feasible or advisable. But if plans do come before the commission and the council for approval, is it possible to include narrative in the proposals that we read and review of what was particularly or previously agreed upon and now what's being requested now? So that we, as commissioners, when we review it, can see what the previous plans had for a specific parcel and what it's being requested for today? So we can see if there are changes to park amounts and open space amounts of land. Because I don't think anybody's going to remember what the old plan was. And if there were promises or approvals made for 100 acres of, or 80-some acres of parks and open space, we're never going to know whether the new.
The plan is memorialized through the map. And so we definitely can add that commentary too, but it won't be forgotten because that is the zoning code map. That is the general plan land use map. So every time a project comes forward, we will compare it to that and then give the planning commission and the city council any sort of recommendation or update as to what they're requesting to be changed.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll continue to move on to agenda item three, the election of 2022 Planning Commission Chairperson and Vice Chairperson per Section E-1 of the Planning Commission Bylaws. Prior to opening to the commission for discussion, allow me to thank you for serving as your chairwoman for the past, you know, 12 months or so. And I've really enjoyed it and appreciate all of you continue to challenge me, and I learn. But a special thanks to Ben and Ashley, the rest of your staff. You make it so much easier. So appreciate you. So with that, I believe, did Heather want to speak to this item as well? Oh, number six. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I was told three, so I was just ensuring. That's okay. Thank you. All right, so with that, I will open it up to our commissioners. If you have any nomination for our 2022 Chairperson.
I would like to nominate Michelle to stay in that role. It's something she's willing to do.
Well, thank you, John. When is my term? I'm so sorry. When's my term end?
Technically, in the bylaws, it says the first meeting. It's, so really, it's time to wish, with this vote, it possibly could change.
Okay.
And then it's a one-year term.
Okay. I wasn't certain how much longer. I'm in the position as a planning commissioner, that's all.
Oh.
That's, yeah, that's what I wasn't certain. No, it's not. But nonetheless. Another year.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that nomination. Thank you.
Are you sure I'm not due March 2022? I think my term is up.
We will find out before the end of the meeting.
Okay. I don't want to accept any nomination if my term is due March 22 because I don't know what's going to happen.
That's what I was thinking as well.
I would not be doing this commission of service to accept something like that and then not be here.
Did we find that out and postpone this agenda item? Okay, thanks. Speaking of agenda modifications, so we'll table that one as well. So we do know that we will modify Agenda Item Three to when we find out some good information, perhaps after business items. So with that, we'll move to, unless there's any other modifications. I'm sorry. I failed to ask. Ben? Oh, okay. We're right back where we started.
Let's get this over with.
Yeah.
So Michelle Blake, appointed March 6, 2019, ending February 28, 2023.
Oh, okay.
Stacy Brookman, ending March 1, 25. Love them, March 1, 25. John, February 28, 23.
There you go.
And then Jackie, 25. And then Lori's also on, 23.
Well, thank you. I will humbly accept here and your second. So thank you. So I guess we'll go ahead and let's vote on the Chairperson role.
Second by.
We had a motion and a second. So now we'll do a roll call vote since we're still in a virtual meeting platform. Chairman or Chairperson woman.
Commissioner Dasher.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale.
Yes.
Commissioner Brookman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Silman.
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake.
Yes, thank you. So now we'll open to Vice Chairperson. And with that, since change is not so much fun, I would like to nominate to have Vice Chairperson, Vice Chairwoman Jackie Silman remain as the Vice Chairperson for 2022.
You know, I think I'm going to decline that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other Vice Chairperson nominations?
I'll nominate John Schaefer since you have an extra year.
Yeah, as long as I'm here for a year, yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Second.
Thank you. We'll take any additional? All right, I didn't think so. Thank you. Ashley, go ahead.
Commissioner Dasher.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale.
Yes.
Commissioner Brookman.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Silman.
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake.
Yes. Congratulations, John.
Congratulations to you.
So do we need to shuffle or is it, yes? Okay.
You're in Chairperson.
Well, anything? It says shuffle.
We don't have to move now, do we?
I follow the rules, okay?
I'm a corner girl. I'm fine with that. The door is always better.
And more room.
I like the spot.
That is a COVID-friendly position right there. All right, well, thanks, guys. All right. So here we go.
Moving.
We'll keep moving to the Agenda Item Number Five, Minutes from the December 8, 2021. Seems so long ago. So looking for an approval unless there's any additional modifications that need to take place. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
Move approval of the Minutes from December 8, 2021.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote. Ashley, please.
Commissioner Dasher.
Aye.
Commissioner Dale.
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman.
Aye.
Commissioner Silman.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Schaefer.
Aye.
Chairwoman Blake.
Yes. Thank you. So that passes. So next, we're moving into business items. So business, or agenda item, I'm sorry, is number six, the Development Plan 21-01, Rivers Edge Apartment. The recommendation is to continue this item until the Planning Commission meeting of February 23, 2022. Due to the continuance, no staff report is necessary at this time unless you have anything to add to that, Ben?
You know, and so a little bit of inside knowledge, John, it's a development plan, development agreement. And so it's John O'Chupiny, David Lonza. My understanding is they're bringing on the Hillbers Group for the construction. And so they're working with them on some construction phasing and timing. And so they're wanting a little bit more time to work through that schedule to respond to the development agreement and with the terms of the development agreement. So the applicant requested it to be continued. And so the unfortunate part with that is we put a notice out to the public that we're going to have it, and then we sent another notice out to say it's going to be postponed. And so we'll probably follow up with one more notice since it's a month apart to them. Technically, we don't have to with it being continued to a date certain, but we'll follow up with one more notice just to let people know when it comes.
Thank you. I do remember that. Remind me the location.
And so it's Lincoln Road, just west of Garden Highway. 196 units proposed, a big three-story, multi-family apartment complex. And there has been some correspondence from the neighbors that I'll share with you as it comes through with me.
Okay. We need more apartments. That's good. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Or did I need a?
With Lori not being on, we're okay.
We're okay.
Yep.
All right, I'm not going to do roll call. Okay, so we'll move on to the fun stuff. Governor Newsom's Senate Bill Nine and the accessory dwelling unit ordinance adoption. So I'll turn it to you, Ben, for a staff report.
Yes, I can. Thank you, Ashley. So really, this is some house cleaning, but it's a good stuff. I feel and staff feels it's a good thing for the city and affordable housing trying to figure out how to make different things work. And so what's been going on is the ADU, state laws have passed regarding accessory dwelling units and this new SB Senate Bill Nine. With that, there was an eight and 10. But this SB Nine, it's an interesting law. And it's really, the intent is to figure out ways to streamline, you know, these second residences, accessory dwelling units. And it really is a bypass method for the Planning Commission for parcel maps and for design restrictions. And so I don't know how, you know, it's like the ADU law. This has been in effect now for a year and a half, and I haven't seen a rush of them just because it's hard to fit and they're expensive to construct, you know? And so you got a lot of, and I think it's great, though. I mean, for multi-generational families, you know, being able to convert a garage or build something above it, it gives that flexibility and it reduces potential impact fees. And it gives them some setback leniencies if it's designated as an ADU. But I'm not getting a rush of them just because they're expensive and financing on them, you know, access, parking law, you know, parking form, et cetera. But the SB Nine takes the ADU one step further. Where basically allows over the counter, you could split the back of your backyard off, you know? So if you come to me and you say, hey, Ben, I want to split the backyard off, I can't really do much because you don't even need to have a flag lot. You just need to basically say, hey, you have some sort of access easement out to the front street. But when you really get into the weeds of it, it's got to be a pretty good-sized parcel because it's got to be 40% of your lot. And then you still have some setback standards and you still have the coverage requirements and you still have the maximum. So I think it's great for, you'll probably see it on larger parcels, maybe that were built in the county that are now in the city, you know? Or some different configurations. But these lots on new subdivisions where they're 55 feet by 100 feet, you know, it's just, I don't see how you could really fit it to come in there. Maybe they could knock the house down and build a duplex. But I don't know if I see that really coming, you know? Because you got the cost of the property, the cost of the house, then you're going to knock it down and build a duplex or a multi-ADU. So, but it is an option. And so really, the intent tonight is to update our zoning code so we're in compliance with state law. And so we'll walk through it a little bit. So SB Nine became effective January 1st, requires the approval of two primary dwelling units. So it's not just an ADU. Basically, if they come in and say, I want two residents on one lot, I'm going to say, okay. In the code, though, we restricted it to be 1,200 square feet. That's been kind of a city standard that has a second unit to be a maximum of 1,200 square feet. State law, and so we have that option. State law also requires a city to allow development of accessory dwelling units, ADUs, junior ADUs. A junior ADU is basically when it's attached. It's when you convert the garage. But it gets a little complicated with the junior ADU because it's only called a junior ADU if it's up to 500 square feet and you share a bathroom. If you go over 500 square feet, then it's called an ADU. So it gets, it really gets into the weeds. So if you've got a garage that's 20 by 30, technically, it's an ADU. But if it's 20 by 20, then it's a junior ADU, you know? But it gives a little flexibility on like the bathrooms number, you know, that type of facilities. He has two primary effects, residents on each parcel. So the city requires cities to permit, so over the counter, two primary residents on each parcel, where previously one primary residence was allowed, requires cities to permit owners of R1 lots to split their lots and create two separate smaller parcels. So no longer, if it's R1, we're not going to come before you and ask for a tentative parcel map. And so where we go through the public hearing process, we notice the neighbors, we're going to say, okay, he's got a really big lot, he's going to split it in half. That would be our typical tentative parcel map process. Now, they basically come over the counter, and if it meets these criteria for being a minimum of 1,200 square feet, being, you know, having access to the front, we will handle that over the counter. Requires city, and when combined with ADUs and junior ADUs, a parcel in R1 zone can have up to four dwelling units. It's possible. I'll run through some pictures here. It would have to be pretty creative to see that on a standard lot, for sure. So here's your standard city lot. It's kind of rectangular. SB Nine would let you put that blue line in there and cut it with a minimum of 40%. So it couldn't be less than 40%. So it kind of has to be in that range from 40 to 50 because you couldn't reduce the other side of it. So you got, that allows this to happen. And you don't have to have a flag lot. It just basically, the way it's written is it has to have access to the front. And so I haven't quite figured out how I'm going to memorialize that, if it's got to be a four-foot easement or what. But that's to be determined based on the state code. What this would allow is a new home, and it let it have smaller setbacks. So it lets it have these, basically, these ADU setbacks where it could be four-foot side yards. Then on top of that, you could have a new ADU because now it's a separate parcel. Each parcel is allowed to have an ADU and a junior ADU.
More space.
No, and there's still some lot coverage requirements. And so it gets really theoretical. So then you could have an ADU on the south one, a new home, and an ADU on the top one. SB Nine, well, total of four units. Then you could even get more complicated, and you could put in the junior ADU where it adds more. So there's a few pictures of different possible configurations that could happen. Do I see a rush of this happening? No, but maybe a potential toolbox for those larger lots that are in certain parts of the city. And honestly, I hope and maybe it helps with the financing because I know that's been talked about as one of the problems that if you have a pool house or a building that's a back and you want to convert it to an A D U, a lot of the problems happen because you know, when you go to the bank to get they're they're appraising it based on the residence versus having a separate viable parcel of the different amount. So it might help with the terms for financing that to construct it. So S B nine limitations only applies in R one zones. Does not allow developments that will result in demolition or alteration of existing affordable or rental housing. So you you can't, they they got the caveat, if it's affordable housing, hey, you can't do this. You know, there's been a lot of talk about, I think, in the news media about we California's got essentially gotten rid of all R one zoning. I think that's kind of, you know, an extreme. We still have R one zoning, but yes, there is the option for somebody to convert it. And and what we're going to see is when development comes in, they still have to do. They still have to meet our density requirements with the map that comes to you. So when when a new development comes in in Lincoln East and it's in the R one zoning with a density of four to eight units, they still need to submit a tentative parcel map to me with that density range. If they split it after the they only could split it then after the fact. And the homeowner agrees that they're living there. And so so the the R one isn't gone, it's still there. One off street parking space required per unit with some exceptions. Those exceptions usually have to deal with if you're close to a bus stop or a transit center. They give you more flexibility on the parking. Parcels must be at least forty percent of the original parcel size and at least twelve hundred square feet. The owners must sign affidavit. So this is another little twist in it. I'm not sure how the city is really going to hold the accountability on it, but when it comes through. If I own one of those big lots and I want to split it per this urban lot split S B nine ordinance, I must sign an affidavit stating that I intend to occupy one house and live there for a minimum of three years. And so it it doesn't supposed to be for, you know, developers speculating. It's supposed to be for somebody that's living there and splits off the back. And then we'll be, as discussed, reviewed administratively and approved by both the Development Services Director and the Public Works Director, the City Engineer. S B nine ordinance, second unit to unit developments. May be attached to adjacent to or detached from other structures on the parcel. Shall be no larger than twelve hundred square feet, shall be no taller than sixteen feet in height from ground level and shall be one story, only applies to new construction. You know, we could get into the weeds on this a little bit. We we put we put some things in there that if you're an existing house and you have those primary setbacks, it'd be like a situation where you could build over the garage, you know, but if it was a new construction and they're going up against the back fence, that four foot, hey, you got to keep it at at one story. One off street parking required, separate entrance entrance required, second unit shall not be rented for a term of less than thirty one consecutive days. And some of these things they put into law, but it gets real hard to enforce. Accessory dwelling, junior accessory dwelling regulations, and really what this does is update our zoning code again to meet the state law. And so here's some of the definitions regarding it allowed in all zones, residential zones, multifamily and single family. So the A D U. So you can't do the part, you only can do the parcel split in R one. But you could do an A D U if you have R one, R two, or R three. The junior A D U, the definition by law is five hundred square feet. It's a shared bathroom, I believe. And then the the size limit for a separate A D U is twelve hundred square feet attached or twelve hundred square feet or fifty percent of the primary. If it is attached. I think if they cut, so they got a twenty six hundred square foot house and they cut it in half, you could have thirteen hundred. But if it's, am I reading that right? Whichever is less, no, no, for attached A D U's for attaches twelve hundred square feet, we we're capping at that. It's hard to keep track of all these numbers. No size limit. A D U's must include include any independent leaving facilities. Must include living facilities for one or more persons. It goes into the definitions. In general, one parking space is required. There is some some concerns that if somebody went crazy with the with all this. Well, you know, where are they going to park on the street, where at? Honestly, the state doesn't care. The state really wants you to reduce vehicle miles traveled and 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 cars are bad. I mean, really, that's that's what
Bike lanes, bike lanes.
That's that's what the push is and and that's basically what the the law is 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 allowed. So environmental determination, basically, it's not considered a project, so it doesn't fall under secret requirements. And so the ordinance does not require any environmental review under secret. And then he one once item, there was a small update. So the fourth page in on the ordinance, the section eight, two point one six oh four D. We updated some of the some of the language in there. A conditional approval of the urban lot split, it really took out kind of that applicant language and it talked about owner of the parcel being split and talks about the owner instead of the applicant. And so we've added we've we've provided that for the public. When you come in the lobby and then you have it, and then basically with the recommendation. I'm recommending A through C, which is that you you conduct a public hearing and then you adopt a resolution recommending to the city council because the process is it will go to the city council, be introduced. And then it followed up with a second meeting where it will be adopted. And then with that recommendation, I'd like you to include the revisions as proposed. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
Sorry, fellow commissioners. Would you like to? Yep. Okay, so we'll open public hearing for public comment at this time. Welcome back, Heather.
Always nice to have.
Miss me. No, sorry.
No, we appreciate you. We never get people.
Done all right? I I I'm so glad I read this. I just saw it today and I'm like, I've got to come here because I've been trying to get an A D U for my property for like, I don't know how long. And they keep changing the rules, so I keep contacting the city every once in a while. And nobody told me about this J junior A D U. I think that matches exactly what what the situation is. I bought a house. And at some point, they put in this man cave. So it's the roof is attached, but there's kind of a breezeway between the man cave and the rest of the house, right? It's perfectly set up for its own little area. I had the city come in, it's all approved. There was a toilet in there that wasn't originally, I don't think the toilet was originally approved. But we had them come in and they we put in a shower. So there's a toilet, sink, shower, there's three piece. And I had an additional sink because at that time they wouldn't approve me to put in a stove to make it an A D U. But that was like two years ago or something. Then they changed the rule. I was paying attention. I contacted them again about a year ago and they said, yeah, you would have to put this, this and this. Or I I'd have to do the stove. They didn't tell me anything about the parking. They didn't tell me, they didn't say, go to go online here and look and see these are the requirements. There was, they didn't tell me anything about that. The only requirement they said is it had to have a stove. So since it didn't have like the type of power you would need to put a stove top in, it doesn't have to have an oven, just the stove. I didn't put that in there at that time. But I've been trying to get this simply because I want to have its own address. And the only way for it to get its own address is I have to get this approved, the city sign off on it so I can go to the to Marysville and have them make it into its own address. So that I can just have a different mailbox on there. You can't have a separate mailbox. Unless it's in its own address. So I've been trying this for I don't know how long, and I really would like to have real concrete information on how I can get this to, right now, the person that living is that's living there is just basically renting a room for me, just like anybody would rent a room from. That's the only way that I can do it because I would prefer to have to do this legal and I'm hoping I'm doing this legal, but because I keep calling the city. And I there's one thing there that I'm a bit nervous about. And I hope that you'll consider it. I don't know if the city was thinking of that when they put that in there was the thirty one days. So if for some reason I couldn't find a tenant, I couldn't use it as an Airbnb because it's listed on there saying that you can't have it for less than thirty one days. And I I I I'm I'm urging you to try and go online and see how many Airbnb's are available within Uba City, considering that we don't have a lot of hotel space right now. I needed that for something and I looked online, I could not find anything. It's really hard to find that here. So it you want to be careful then if you're passing something like this that's that's very specific and says you can't use it for more than thirty one days that you might be restricting some of that. I mean, that might be the reason maybe the city is thinking of that, you know, they prefer people to go to a hotel and have less Airbnb's in the city. It 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 does make a difference as far as you might not know this from here, but from other communities like downtown Sacramento. It raises the price of some of the rents and things like that if you're competing with these Airbnb customers, right? So I don't know if that was what the city was thinking about, but I just kind of need to know if that's a restriction because then I'll know, oh, I can't use, I can only rent this out as a room. I can't use this as an Airbnb in the future. That makes sense? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ben, would you like to address any of those concerns? And Heather, it sounds like the Senate bill is going to be right up your alley. You might be one of our first applicants, so.
Yeah, I I'd be happy to meet. Yeah, I was unaware that you have a prior attempt, so 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 please, with schedule, we'll catch up after the meeting, we'll schedule time because there's a there there's a strategy, I think, that needs to be worked out between calling it a remodel. If it's a junior A D U, if it's under five hundred square feet, or if it's an A D U and you want the separate address, and then sometimes it gets tricky with the post office if they want a separate parcel versus the, you know, for the address. So we'll we'd be happy to meet with you and get into the specifics and work through that. And so regarding the thirty one days, my understanding that's a state law. And and so that's what we're memorializing when we bring it through.
Yeah.
Thank you, though, very much.
Yeah. All right. Did you have any comments on this agenda item, sir? Nope. Okay. Did we have any in the audience or Q and A on Zoom?
I don't know comments on Zoom.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and take it back to the commissioners, Vice. Safer, would you like to speak to the, this is right up your alley.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I was trying to understand, Ben. And you you helped me with some of the comments that you made, clarified some things, but I I do have some additional questions. So if we look at that chart up there, when you subdivide and you have to have at least forty percent coverage for this new parcel. The do you have to maintain the setbacks of the original home when it was built so that you you have to have at least some delineation like in that one, the back of the house, but you have to have at least this that same setback that they were approved when they built the house to begin with?
Yeah, I guess let me follow. So for this guy?
Yeah, like for that guy, if you look at the back of his house where he's subdividing his lot, he has a distance between the back of his house to that to the to the lot division.
So no, it gives you the updated S B nine urban lot setback requirements. Which is a reduced setback.
Okay, that's the first thing. So the second thing is, let's just say.
Because most of these, oh, I'm sorry, oh, you're just to add in, most of these, the reason they have a backyard because that was the minimum standard. And so that that is where, yeah, you can't even have a yard in most places at all, but but there is, they give that flexibility where if it's an urban lot split under S B nine, it gives it, it gives it reduced setbacks.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I I mean, really, it's it's really kind of dynamic and and the flexibility on it is pretty amazing because it's it doesn't have to necessarily have access to the road. You know, it just, I mean, I mean, I've got to be careful with that. You have to have access, but it's not a requirement that it has to be twenty foot wide or you have to have space for a parking lot. It just really you know, if you come through, I would hope that they memorialize like four foot, you know, so somebody could, you know, in case twenty years from now that, you know, the back neighbor gets mad at the front neighbor, they still have a way to the back, but but there's extreme flexibility provided in this.
And you're not required to put a fence along that new property line when you subdivide? Okay. So the second question, let's say you're working off a ten acre parcel. And you sub and well, I guess my first question before I even ask this is, can you do more than one subdivision?
So there's not too many ten acre, so if you have a ten acre parcel in the city. That'd be interesting because most likely it'd be a nonconforming lot and it wouldn't meet the density requirement. And so we I'd probably have to get into the weeds on the entitlement process of where it's at because most likely I'd tell them, hey, you got to come in with a subdivision map and you need to show me forty lots because that's the minimum for that ten acre parcel. If you had a nonconforming ten acre lot. It was R one, I'd have to think about that. If we let just a small split happen. You know, I'd have to, that one's a little different. I'd have to, I'd have to get into that one.
So because here's what I'm thinking. So if you had ten acres and you need a forty percent coverage, you you could, if you split it twice, so you have two forty two four acre parcels, they each meet the forty percent threshold, the remaining ones two acres. So now you've got three separate lots. And I'm asking, can you do that all at one time? You'd have a four acre, a four acre and a two acre.
You can't split twice.
That's my, okay.
So with this, with this urban lot split, you only get split once.
That's my first.
So if you had a two acre to hit that criteria, it'd have to be a four acre and a six acre. And I think I think you'd run into problems, you'd run into problems because of density. I think our general plan would still hold it up because instead of going to a higher density, now you're making it you're still not hitting that four units per acre density. And so I I think I'd have some problems if somebody came in with a ten acre lot to do it.
Okay. Because and here's.
But they have the flexibility to do an A D U.
Right. But they couldn't split the lot to do it.
They couldn't, in order to split the lot, they'd have to go. I got to talk to my attorney and I'd have to look at this. But I think I would be holding it up that it's not consistent with the general plan. And they would need to come before and go through our standard process of a tentative map. And then work out a phasing diagram or somehow, and maybe they do one phase of it now, but it would it'd get a little more complicated if you had a lot that large.
So basically, you you what you're saying is you can only split one lot into two lots and that's it.
Correct.
So here's my second question. Let's say somebody goes ahead and does that. They they take that ten acre parcel, they split it. So now you got.
Let's use a one acre parcel. The ten acre is throwing me a lot.
So now you got six.
Let's do one acre in Uba City.
Six tenths of an acre and four tenths of an acre. Okay, so that's they get done splitting it. Is there a certain distance of time that has to pass before they can then do that again with, because you got two legal parcels now?
It's it's the way it says it's only one split under this urban lot process.
Right, but now you've got two separate legal parcels. So why can't one of those legal parcels?
Because we're going to flag it as it being split.
Having me split once before. So they can never split either of those two separate legal parcels again under this S B nine.
Under S B nine, if it was large enough, it was point, so you had four tenths of a I I would say most likely it'd be open for the tentative map process. But then we get, then it would go through our regular process, public hearing, have some, you know, a driveway to a public road and it would have to be reviewed at a higher level.
I'm just concerned that people are going to try to take advantage of this and then you're going to end up having massive units on on a on a one acre lot because they're trying to take advantage of the S B nine.
Absolutely.
And I
I'm waiting for the creativity. I I've prepped our staff. I know the attorneys have prepped us like, hey, people are going to take advantage of it. I'm sure they will. I don't see, I don't have a feeling that just because there are a lot configurations and where the city is at. I don't see a rush, but there is going to be a lot of these individuals scratch our heads on how to make these work.
And for people that are doing it, would would it, from a tax perspective, I would assume that once the split's done and your unit's built, someone's going to come out and reassess? You know, the it's for tax purposes, each of these individual lots then?
It it's it would just be, yeah, would they'll record, they'll record, they'll record, they'll still record, record a parcel map. And a deed. And it would then go to the county assessor's office and and be, you know, documented and appraised.
So each one would have its own A P N?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I, so I'm just saying, asking that from the perspective of those that want to do it because they're going to raise your tax bill doing this. Because if you're going to split it and you're going to put a second structure. Now, now, if you keep, if you're going to do it and you're going to keep both homes and rent one, you're going to probably end up pushing your tax bill up. Because they're going to value the improvements to that second lot and you're going to have a higher tax bill. Now you have your rent income to pay it, but.
Agreed. And that's where I think there's real strategy to each one because you get the pros and cons with a separate parcel. You get a separate water line, you get a separate mailing address, no problem. You get to finance it separately because now when you go to the bank, you have a property.
It's all true.
But and but now, when you have that separate parcel, guess what? You get you get impact fees. Because you're now you're a primary residence versus if you left it whole and built it and called it an A D U, then you you miss the impact fees. But you don't have maybe the financing and some of the benefits of having your separate waters meter in in some of that, it's separation on how you sell it.
Okay, awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And that's for, you know, for the public, for anybody listening, for anybody, please. And and that's for, you know, for the public, for anybody listening, for anybody, please, um, the staff's working through these and. And interpreting them, and I think there's a lot of one offs, so we're happy to sit down and kind of strategize with the owners. Or the any potential developers on what we could do.
One comment. Heather, I don't, it escapes me on how they would, anybody, the state, the city, anybody would enforce that 31 day provision. Uh, that they would have to stay in there longer than 31 days. Uh, what you may do, and that's the first thing I'm going to do when I hit my car when I leave here, is look up Senate Bill nine. Not the actual bill itself, but look up SB nine and then go to the footnotes all the way to the bottom. And maybe some genius there came up with some way to enforce that 39 or 31 day rule. Uh, because I'm like, Ben, I don't know how you would do that. That just seems ridiculous. Yeah, my comment, besides the fact that they could move it to your place and have to park in Fresno. I have no idea. No idea. Yeah, I'm not smart enough to know it yet.
Yeah, ready to stay, we're not running out of. Things to check, yeah.
All right, well, with all the comments being stated, um, I'm going to be for the motion, of course, and the additional revisions that were recommended by staff.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I uh. I recommend that we initiate Senate Bill nine and accessory dwelling unit ordinance adoption. That we uh, conduct a public hearing. And then adopt a resolution recommending that the city council of the city of Yuba City adopt an ordinance to update the Yuba City municipal code. To establish regulations for urban lot splits and two unit developments in accordance with Senate Bill nine. And adopt amendments to regulations of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units.
Including the additional revisions that were recommended.
Including the additional revisions that were recommended. By staff. Hi.
Hi. I think you voted on it. I think you are, you you're okay. So so if if there, if there is a commissioner online. And then you'd have to do it with Lori not being. And so now, so um, everybody voted aye. Is how it's recorded. We're good.
With that, future agenda item 10.
Okay. Well. Here. Okay, so future agenda items, what we have is the Rivers Edge apartment, um. Multi-family apartment complex has been continued, um, so anticipate seeing that before you. And then also the Spring Hill Suites, so the, um, it's been a while. But it's the hotel at the southwest corner of 99 and 20. Their. Use permit extension, or the development plan? Development plan, the extension is up for review. And so they've submitted their letter of request within the the time, and that will come before you for consideration, so. Um, besides that, I could get, um, I'll wait for the director's report. Okay, so I'm right into that. I was thinking I had skipped one. Okay, what do I got for you? So the housing element, so I just wanted to keep you informed. So the housing element, it's it was back in fall. It's a big section of the general plan. It's required as an update every eight years. We um, we reviewed it here, recommended to the city council, it got approved to the city council. Um, within the timeline, it went to the state HCD. HCD, guess what? They they wanted us to tweak a few things, and so we got the notice back in December to tweak a couple of things. We we've bounced that off the attorney. Um, we've tweaked a couple of things, and then we're waiting for concurrence from HCD to to avoid this back and forth with them. On it, and so we thought we had it done before. Nothing major um, with it. It really kind of memorial. We kind of added some language in there about infrastructure and um. To to aid um, housing in low income areas and put some threshold criteria in there about um. Kind of matrix parameters for um. The accountability for affordability and what the city is going to need to do over the next eight years to to help. Um, with affordable housing. And so that's coming back to the city council. So I just wanted to let you know. If you see that on the city council agenda, that's what's going on. And so, um, but I'm anticipating we've got all of the bugs worked out, and then that's going to be. Um, at the two, two 15 meeting. The February 15 meeting, and then go to the um. Go to the state, be finalized, and then that will be the final draft for the next eight years. Um, annexations, so this has been a hot topic. Ashley's got a. So at the LAFCO meeting last week, um. Big stuff. Um, the city doesn't annex property very often, and all of a sudden, we had two big annexations that happened. And so um. So there, so this area, this. So I guess we have this, and the next map is zoomed in a little bit better. Okay. So you can kind of get, this is just a reference of what's going on. So you have this Lincoln East Pacific Plan area. And then you have the Bog Stewart Master Plan area, that down in here where you have things going on. And so you zoom in here on the Lincoln East specific. No, this is the Kell, okay, so we zoom in on the Bog Stewart Master Plan. And so the Bog Stewart Master Plan, just recently, they went through in Newcombe. Is what they call this area annexed over. So a few months ago, boom. This has been a long time coming, five years, six years in the process. Um, this part came in. And with that, there was, it's a landowner application. So when you're, when the city's sphere of influence has been adjusted. And when um. And since you've gone through the EIR, since you've adjusted the ma, um, the um. You've gone through the EIR process, the environmental. You've adjusted the city's sphere of influence. So the sphere of influence now goes along Stewart. Um, it goes down Garden Highway, Stewart to Walton, and then up. You're in the city's sphere of influence. There's a master tax exchange agreement with the city. And you have the zoning, the city zoning, which was established through the Bog Stewart Master Plan. That you are ready to come into the city. So now anybody in here that meets LAFCO's criteria, um, which I don't have it exactly in front of me, but you have to have. 300 feet of budding, you know, you have to be a budding. The county property. And then you have to be of a minimum size, and you can't create an island. Um, you, they have this criteria. Then you can annex, and there's different ways to annex. If you're a landowner. You just submit your name, you submit your money, you give them 6,000 bucks, and and then you have the engineer draw the map, and basically they have a vote. And then the LAFCO members vote to say, okay, they meet all the criteria, the environmental is done, the master tax change agreement is good, the zoning is done. Boom, they vote, and it's usually a slam dunk, because basically you're doing everything in accordance with all, everything that's the entitlements that have been set up. That happened on Newcombe. And then immediately after that, Kells is the blue part. Um, their application came in, and they, that vote was the last week. On the 22nd, or last week here in January. Um, and so what's going on is it's creating this buzz for the rest of the area, and so now you have Bosari. That's got an application into LAFCO. And then you have a lot of these owners, um, Rye. Um, and and some of these others that are wanting to piggyback on. Because now it's, hey, um. Others are doing it, do I, does it save money? Does it give value to my property? Et cetera, is it advantaged to do it or not? And it's creating that buzz, and so there are a lot of people talking. And the city's trying to coordinate with LAFCO to say, what can we square off? What can we bring in? Um, you know, because we want to have it squared off as much as possible. What we're still doing. You know, like Arco, we're trying to get ahold of Arco and have him bounce in at the same time, just so that it's squared off. He wasn't quite ready and was out of the country when this vote happened. Um, but there might be some conversations where where we try to get Arco to square that off, and then we'll see. Based on some recent talk about, you know, how we could bring maybe in this whole block, and so we're not running into a problem with, in just being squared off. So that is what's going on, and so you have this annexation, you, so this landowner is now submitted. And so LAFCO, they meet every two months. Most likely, it won't come before them until um. Um, now is January. I can't do my months, February, March, they meet in March. He'll probably tell him, hey, this is coming before him, or April, May, so you'll probably see a vote on this mid-May. Um, for this property. Okay, so now you get over the Lincoln East Pacific Plan, and this gets even a little bit more complicated. And so um, the Lincoln East Pacific Plan, and so. This whole, this whole area is in the Lincoln East Pacific Plan. It goes farther north, but this block. Um, Carm Baines came in. West Sanborn Estates for this little block, they did a tentative subdivision map. And it, you know, as a condition of the subdivision map, it had to be annexed into the city. Because it basically, as it's in the county, it doesn't meet the county rules as far as utilities, uh, density, et cetera. And so. The subdivision map's been working through its process. And then, so he put an applicant, so when he put an application in to LAFCO. He didn't do just the 20 acres. He did all of the property that he has. And so he submits that, it doesn't even go through the city, it goes directly to LAFCO. It says, here's my $6,000 deposit. Here's my money for Gilizer, here's my map. And and so. And then with that, soon thereafter, we got approached, the the city got approached by Sandu. Who owns the property up here. We told him, hey, you know, this is going through LAFCO right now. It's probably a good idea to get with LAFCO and see if you could piggyback together. The city would like to square off the whole thing. And so when they do that, they route it to the agencies, and then the county also recommended. That the, that we attempt to square off the whole boundary. So with that, it makes sense. You know, everybody wants to have a square, a square boundary. But but at the same time. If this person votes no. We don't necessarily want to hold up this guy's annex, this application. If he votes no. And so the city met with LAFCO. The strategy is. That we met with, we, this was already on the books, it was already going to vote in January. What's asked the Rye? The Temple and Dylan. Do you want to be included in this annexation? So it's squared off. The Temple said yes. Dylan said no. Rye said no at this time. So with this annexation that had got approved last week. This 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 map is actually needs to be adjusted where it comes down and goes around like this, where it comes up to include the temple. Sandu's annexation is still in the works. Sandu's annexation is still in the works. Additional property owners have requested to do their own application and come in. So some, some other owners in here. And the city's told LAFCO. That we'll look to go to the city council, request approval. So staff is, so I want to make sure I get this, because I don't have authority yet. Staff has discussed the plan where we're, I'm going to go to the city council. I'm going to recommend that the city put an application in. For all the properties, the remaining properties in here. And so when there's more than 12 registered voters, which there will be because of the the houses on Sanborn. There's a protest vote. And so what will happen is we'll put our application into LAFCO. They'll have, there'll be a vote, a vote that goes out where they have a public hearing. Where they have an option for, so those owners, if they show up or protest in writing, and I have more than half of the 12. Say no, then it, then you you either have to um. Then then the annexation either stalls or or is 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 dead, or it goes to a ballot vote. Most likely, the city wouldn't go to a ballot vote because we wouldn't want to force those owners in, and we don't want to pay the cost. To try, try to do it. But what what that would do then, it was, it would revert. To the landowner map, because these guys have their, their applications in. So you'll have Sandu with his application, and then most likely you'll have another application with some other owners in here. And so the city's council is going to be requested to say, hey, we'd like to go out to square this off. If nobody shows up and it votes, then the whole thing would be squared off and be done. Everybody's in the city. If I get more than half the registered voters protest. Then it will have a weird boundary. But the boundary will then revert to whoever put in a land over or application. That may, if you follow any of that mess. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on it before I move on. They're not too complicated. What what it involves, especially with these, because. Most of the work has been done. The Lincoln East Pacific Plan, the environmental document, it still lives, even though we've rescinded the requirement that you have to have like a DA and affordable out. Some of these requirements, the environmental document still lives. And so that's the basis for it. The zoning's established. And so really, the big thing is is an engineered map that has the nor, the bearings and eastings. It has a um, board of equalization fee that's typically $3,000 to the state for them to update the jurisdictional boundary. And then you you pay a deposit for um, the LAFCO to process the, because they'll have to send the notification, the mailer is out, and they write the staff report to come up. And so it's not simple by any means, but i- i- at the same time, they just did one, and it's kind of a copy and paste with different info in it.
I have a question through the chair. Um, have the folks that are against being annexed in, have they had a common theme in the reason why?
You know, so from the two that I talked to, there is just, they didn't see an advantage to it. Be, we met with them, everybody was civil. Um, the temple, really, they saw the advantage because of the potential of utilities, city utilities. You know, where all of a sudden, if you have a property that's restricted because of the septic replacement areas and their storm drainage. All of a sudden, if you have city utilities and partner, there there's an advantage.
Well, if there's no disadvantage, then why not either? I mean.
Yeah. But everybody, you know, I don't want to speak for other people, but everybody's afraid of change a little bit, you know, and they're, they're farming, they're doing their thing. Hey, leave me alone until I need to do it. But um. And so I I think that's where, with the Rye, with David Rye here, I think the notification was kind of late that he could be included. Basically, at the whim of a vote, instead of a separate application. And so he wasn't ready. He might come in with the new landover application. Um, but at, at, as of the vote last week, he wasn't ready to come in.
Anyone done a one pager for the benefits of being annexed that you give to these folks if they're not thinking about it?
Oh, yeah, for sure. So I mean, from our whole keyhole experience, we have a whole brochure on the pros and cons and uh. What to know, but the property taxes stay the same. You get to vote for a city council member, you know, but um, but but yeah, I mean, you're kind of rural, it's not developed yet, there's not a lot of change. Um, maybe, you know, maybe you could talk to, the realtors might say if it's in the city with a higher density, maybe there's a value appraisal difference, you know, I'm not sure.
Well, I know when, well, I don't know if Stacy was there at the time, but I know in our little subdivision there. When we were getting annexed in, they they did a, it wasn't even a one pager, it was a one statement. If you don't get annexed in now, you're going to have to pay $25,000 to get hooked on city water. That was a pretty good incentive.
It's clear.
Nice and clear and concise, so that pretty much did it for everybody.
Yeah, and I I mean, you're probably a good representative as as one that, hey, you were happy, you built in the county, you know, nice subdivision in the county. I, you know, it'd be nice to chat sometime. Is there a difference? I I don't know for you, have you noticed a difference? We sweep your, sweep your streets, probably.
Well, the streets are a lot nicer, but the water's a lot better. I can tell you that. It clearly went from hard water to soft water after we switched. Yeah, and then, you know, they did it, the city paid for it, so that was, that was good, but they they were saying we had to pay for it. If we didn't do it then, then we'd have to pay for it later, and we would have to do it. So.
On the flip side, you got Cherry Street. Don't get me started, right? No curbs, no gutters, I get annexed in, I lose my park, the school gets the profit. So, you know, it goes both ways, right? Um, so I'm sorry, through the chair?
Absolutely.
The ag land, that still is farming land in that greenery that I'm looking at, right? Are they farming?
So when it comes in, it's still, it it's that allowed use. It's really when the, the change in use only happens when they go to for development.
Okay.
So if if.
That's when we see them.
That's when you see them. And so they could still farm, they could still have their existing uses. But when they change that use, so they propose the subdivide, that's when it comes to the city council, city planning commission, city council, the entitlement process, and the city's processes.
Yeah, I I'm absolutely not against the annexation, but I just worry, again, we go back to. Our ag land, how much we're losing, and I realize we need this, but um. And then you look at how many I know on the Sutter County Planning Commission, we hear it constantly, you know. They fly over, we couldn't approve some properties because, you know. But I can't remember what the Red Star Ranch or something like that. I mean, there's so many. You know. Complications when you're that close to the ag land. That's all I'm saying. It's just, it's kind of.
There's definitely an ag buffer established at the sphere, but the sphere, but. There's definitely an ag buffer established at the sphere, but the sphere, but the sphere boundary now is that, is all the way George Washington.
Yeah.
You, you know, and so, um, definitely, nobody likes to see ag go away, but it, this has been planned. Um, build out for, in the sphere.
Well, hopefully they'll jump on board and, and develop as well.
Any other comments on, in this report?
I mean, I got more, if you wanna hear more.
Alright.
Um, just some other things that are going on, the, the city received a hundred and sixty-five thousand from Secog and REAP funding. And so it's basically housing-related, um, initiatives, so we're gonna have a consultant do a zoning code review. To see if, he can look at it from an outside view to see if there's different things we could tweak to help with housing. Um, housing element standards, and then we're also looking at maybe, if I have the money and they'll allow it, is, is come up with a, a typical ADU plan set. So that way, maybe if somebody wants to convert their garage, I have a, you know, a template, a boilerplate that we could give people, or if it's a back. Um, building, that way to help streamline some of that. There was a bus tour yesterday, so the mayor had a, a development bus tour, so it was in the paper today, what's in front of you is kind of the handout, it was in the paper today. But the kind of the little flyer, and so that's kind of my update as far as some of the development activities, most, most of these are, um. Ongoing pending, or you've seen directly, but it, it, a little pretty, um, infomap, you know, if, if any questions on that, please let me know.
Highly encourage you guys to do it, oh, I'll be doing more, and it was, it was a good time, it's, it's fun to see what we've, you know. Approved on paper, come to life, so.
Yeah, there is actually, um, moving dirt on, on some of them out.
Yeah, that was really neat, I was like, oh, it's happening.
When do they anticipate having the temple done, and then, and then open for just, you know, public tours before they shut it?
You know, I have not checked in with them lately, I would anticipate that they're on the downhill slide. You know, over the next six months, they're moving pretty quick, they're starting to do some landscaping. Um, but, but we'll definitely, um, have the notice out for when they do the, um, because as you, you kind of mentioned, there's one big opening for the public.
Yeah.
The kind of designated period to walk through and see it before they seal the doors.
Seal the doors, that's it, yeah.
And, and the opening is very public, yeah.
Done. Not allowed.
Um, so, the city mayor, um, uh, spoke to, uh, Commissioner Brookman and, um. Um, asked if he would serve as the Sutter County rep for another year, and so Planning Commissioner Brookman agreed. And so that item will be going to the city council for a recommendation to the board, and then the county board will adopt it. And so then that will run until the end of next February. Um, and then, I'm pretty sure I said this last time, but Diana has been appointed the new city manager. And so with that, um, she's moving from public works to the city manager position. And so, what you'll be seeing at the next, um, city council meeting is, is an item that appoints me. The Public Works Director slash Development Services Director, and creates a Deputy Development Services Director that we would then recruit for. And gives us a little time to build up, uh, somebody in this role, so you'll see a little bit of transition, um, but I'm, you, you still have me for quite a while. Um, and so with that, that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Ben? Thanks, Ben, so we'll move on to, uh, Yuba City Planning Commission to provide any updates. I mean, besides my update would be, the bus tour was, um, it was just, it was a, a good time. And it makes you see, I don't know, you know, when you're driving around, it's one thing, but when you're on this tour and things are being pointed out, it's just. It's a prideful moment, so I encourage it. So Sutter County Representative, update please.
Yes, ma'am, uh, we had five public hearings at our last meeting last Wednesday. Uh, two of them were technically oversized shade project for, uh, Feather River Water, those are approved. And then we had three public hearings related to, all of them related to ag land and a split of some of that property. To get their rightful one residential structure per parcel that they get there, and I'm referring to twenty acre parcels, ag twenty. Uh, we had our election of officers for this year, Commissioner Ivory remains at Live Oak from the county. Uh, Commissioner Campbell comes to Yuba City, I thought after four years, maybe some fresh blood takes my spot. So.
So is this our last time?
No, I'll stay on until February sometime when, uh, Commissioner Campbell comes over, so we have a good transition.
Okay.
But with that, I'd like to thank you all for your assistance over the last four years. I had fun, learned a lot here.
Who, who's the chairman? Are you the chairman?
Oh, yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you missed something.
For yet another year.
Very good.
I'll be Michelle's counterpart over at the county, and, uh, uh, Marler will be the vice chair again. And just in case you had that longing feeling, uh, we've gone to only one year. For chair and vice chair, to two years for chair and vice chair. Now, you know that time, right?
I do, and I think.
You were on the two-year one.
It was, you know what, you learn so much, I, that's why I was really happy about Michelle for two.
And then they, at the last meeting, we took out the time limit entirely. So, uh, just before you see the announcement, and all raises for me, uh, I'll probably win, I'll probably win another year over at the county. Uh, and that's it, ma'am.
Bittersweet, a component of it, but.
He's a very good man, and extremely, uh, inquisitive and articulate, very good person.
Sounds like John. We get another John.
Hence, you're the chair.
Yeah, I get this again.
Yeah, one more item, it just came to mind, and so they released the, um, Planning Commissioners, um. Annual conference, it's in San Ramon, and so, I mean, it's in person, they're, they're saying it's in person. Um, I'm looking forward to it, I think staff's gonna go down, we're gonna stay the night, a couple nights, and, um, have dinner, and so I know it's not the most. It's not San Diego, but, uh, I encourage anybody that's interested, please, um, reach out to Jaspreet, I think an email's going out. And we're happy to, um, set that up and have a little team building or, um, you know, education in, in between, so.
Those are great conferences, they really are, regardless of its suspicious location.
When I was a kid, the Greyhound Bus Depot in San Ramon was at a Texaco Gaste. Right next to the Kaiser plant, yeah.
Alright, guys, with that, it is seven seventeen in this meeting's.